Stand for the pledge, flag to the rear. What do you read?
To the back of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
I can't do it.
Mayor Morandi.
I am here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Burr.
I am here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Bellotto is absent.
Yes, he said.
Am I X?
No, he said he would miss the meeting tonight.
Oh, he did?
Yes, he did.
Well, that's not great. He asked for something to be put out there and now he's not going to be here.
On the table anyway.
Yeah, on my table, yeah, because I'm not discussing it. He's here. Okay, we have the police report up first.
Evening, everybody.
Evening, Mayor.
For the month of May, we had a total number of seventy-six calls. Year-to-date is three-hundred-and-eighteen. We had one arrest for a suspended license for driving a motor vehicle without a license in the month. We had thirty-one moving violations, seventy-six parking summonses issued. Total number for the month was a hundred-and-seven, and for the year it was four-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Mayor, it appears as if the number of calls for service were higher in the month of May than in previous months. Do you have any...
As the summer months come along, we get a lot more phone calls for noise complaints. It doesn't show on May, but in general, we get a lot more calls with the tours coming up during the weekend. We get more calls usually when the warm months come around. We're seeing an uptick definitely in accidents. We're getting a lot of backup accidents. Food waste is a big spot, just people backing up and not paying attention. And in the village in general, people coming out of the spots down by the depot restaurant, they're coming out, and as you know, on a Saturday or Sunday, when it gets warm out, the village is packed, and they're not paying attention. They're not, nothing major, but they're still, we'll always get upticks in accidents, and actually seven for the month was a lot. So, other than that, we have the two new officers started. Officer Bulger trained, Officer Arno yesterday or today, and I'm taking out Officer tomorrow, tomorrow night on four on four-twelve.
Thank you.
When do you think they'll solo?
We will have them on the schedule July. July first, they'll have to submit their schedule, and I'll put them out, and they'll be solo. One officer knows the village very well, and he already works somewhat in another department that does all the computer work that we have, so just kind of just go over a few things with him that Officer Bulger's doing. And the other officer will get a little more training for him, so we're going to have him out a couple of times. Usually I try to have them out four times with different officers, working different shifts, day to at four-twelve in the midnight, just to see what we do, and then if I feel that they're ready to go out, I'll start putting them out on their own.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a planning board, or no, let's see, recommission, we do not have any report from, planning board. Let's see, have a short one. Mention PBA has no report applications before us. Just to remind you, monthly reports are due. That's from Jeff. So, ZVA has nothing also?
No, Z...
I think before them, which is unusual. ZVA, Aaron?
So, we've got the twenty-one parsonage public hearing that was closed at our last meeting last Thursday, and we expect to vote on that at our next meeting. There's an ongoing application to convert a barn into a house, and we granted variances for five railroad streets to put a shed in their backyard. It's a new shed. That's it.
When do you expect a decision on twenty-one parsonage?
I expect we're going to vote at our next meeting.
And that is?
Let's see, six, so that'll be the twentieth?
June twentieth?
Yeah, next Thursday.
And thank you and the board for working on that. A difficult application, so complicated, I should say. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Phillips Town, TV is not here, unfortunately. We not interviewed tonight. Historic District Review Board, nothing from, nothing from fire company, nothing from TBAB, code update.
Yes. No additional written comments were received by the deadline of May third from the fourth public meeting. The fourth public meeting is now considered closed. The month of May was spent reviewing all chapters in the village code for consistency and clarity. Consistency and clarity are one of the two topics for Phase Five. Recommended changes have been identified for a number of chapters. The CUC has requested feedback from the village board on these recommended changes. These reviews will continue through the month of June. The recommended changes have also been forwarded to the HDRB, to the planning board, to the ZBA, to the tree advisory board, to the water and wastewater department, and to, I think I sent them to the highway department. Bugsy here?
Yes.
Bugsy, did I send them to you?
Which is that?
The recommended changes to...
Yes.
Okay. So, the code update committee will meet in July to review the full set of recommended changes to the village code, including the feedback from the village board and other interested parties. At that time, the CUC will develop a schedule for the remaining activities for 2019. The May conference call with NYSERTA was conducted. No issues were raised by NYSERTA. NYSERTA accepted the materials the CUC submitted for the fourth public meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Water wastewater.
We'll start with the water department. The annual drinking water quality report summarizing operations and test results for the year 2018 by Brimble Ever and is also available on the village's website. There are additional printed copies here at the office if anyone wants to stop in at the clerk, if they didn't get one or want another one. So, that's all. And then on the twenty-eighth of May, we have a process analyzer for chlorine residual fail. It's been in service for twenty-two years, and we definitely got our money worth out of it. New unit arrived last Tuesday. We were able to install it in-house that afternoon, saving additional costs. The unit itself is thirty-four-hundred dollars, so at least we were able to get it in with no additional costs. We were in touch with the health department all the way through the process. Basically, it was from May twenty-eighth to June fourth. What's involved there is that while the plant is operating, we have to take manual readings every four hours in order to be compliant with the health department. They were notified, they were on board with it, they know what we did, everything was good, and now we're back up to, the analyzer just works all the time, so we can see any interval at all. All right, regarding the Catskill DEP project, nothing new to report, so there's that. Any questions on water?
No.
Wastewater. We've received the summary reports, actually just this afternoon, the summary reports and video discs from the cleaning and inspection projects performed in late April. The report will now be forwarded to Pitt and Garrow and Doach for review and prioritization of projects they would find in looking at those videos and reading the reports. And earlier this year, I spoke of wanting to have a pilot study done on de-watering our sludge at the wastewater plant. We've actually had three in the past four weeks, so it's been nice and busy down there, three different units from three different manufacturers, all performing a similar task. And that allows us to see how each is performed in place as opposed to just watching a video, here's how our stuff works. We actually got to see it in, you know, at our facility, on our sludge, you know, that type of thing. Pitt and Garrow and Doach had personnel on site for each demo, and we'll have a summary report and conceptual design for the project prepared so that you guys can weigh in and, you know, see what the options are and the cost for the project. The cake produced by these machines averages around eighteen percent solids, which is kind of weird to think about what that would be, but it's like Play-Doh consistency, is about eighteen percent solids. What we're hauling away at twelve point nine cents a gallon is less than one percent solid. So, we've been hauling a whole lot of water away, and this is a means to haul solids away. And hopefully someday we find a way to use it for compost, but we'll see.
Greg, what does one of these three machines or whatever cost?
What they have to do is, what they bring in for the demo is just like a microunit that just says, this is kind of how, and it works at a very low speed. What we then have to do is determine what we need for size for gallons per minute to go through it in order to make it efficient for our process. So, that's where the engineers will get involved in all of that. So, it'll be probably a solid month before we're really talking numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Building Department, monthly report, let's see, new applications, eight building permits issued, six operating permits issued, one COs issued, four record searches completed, three complaints received, two referrals generated, one from the HDRB. Fees, or application and permit fees collected, one thousand fifty dollars. Record search fees collected, two-hundred-and-twenty-five for April of one thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
For the month of May, we had fifty-four point seventy-two tons of garbage, and for recycling, we had seventeen point four-nine tons. For the month of May, we concentrated on street sweeping, filling potholes, and preparation for the Memorial Day remembrance. We pulled sidewalks, ground down stumps, and poured new sidewalks on Orchard Street, Church Street, and Pine Street. We pulled sixty-foot of sidewalk also on Church Street. We fixed the south side subway drain and installed an inspection plate for any future problems. We also installed a new downspout on the West Subway building to fix the broken one. We washed all the garbage cans on Main Street and on the dock and have new ones set to switch on and out so we can keep them semi-clean and smelling decent down there. We installed and painted a bed liner on the new two thousand nineteen F-350, and the two thousand three International garbage truck blew the fan clutch and hub assembly and was brought up to the Hatfield Brothers to be fixed. We are looking to fix curbing issues on Main Street and throughout the village for the month of June.
Thank you. We'll be working on the line painting also, where I see you have begun.
Oh, yeah, yeah, now we're going to be doing that as well.
Good. Justice Court, fines forfeited, bails and civil penalties, four thousand two-hundred-and-fifty, parking tickets, fifteen hundred and eighty-five, including termination and suspension fees, bail, blah, 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 hundred and five mandatory state surcharges, two thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-three for a total of eight thousand four-hundred-and-three dollars. Greg, are you going to be sticking around for a little while, because I want to ask you something with the Matt Krug hire? So, okay, we'll see if we can get through this, but it looks like it's, maybe we could switch. Okay, why don't we, so Greg can take off, we'll move to number twelve now. We'll skip ten and eleven for now. Next is to approve a hiring of the new wastewater wastewater superintendent, Matt Krug. I don't know how many months ago it's been now. A few months ago, you know, in preparation for Greg leaving, we thought it best to try to find someone to fill some, I feel, big shoes. Anyway, it's a specialty, I believe, didn't really think we were going to get, you know, a person to respond that, you know, was going to be able to do the job, but we did. We had a number of applicants, but there was only one that had both licenses for water and wastewater. He's had plenty of experiences, experience, and has a solid background, and we checked references and everything, and, you know, person almost seems too good to be true, really. So, we're happy to, you know, we interviewed everyone, interviewed Matt, went over all the details. I think he rode around with Greg and checked out facilities and checked out, you know, what's going on in the village as far as the wastewater goes. So, you know, I was really comfortable, really happy. Matt, we couldn't like, you know, there's a number of factors. We couldn't just, you know, come out and say Matt was going to be hired because he's working for someone, and it was like two months in advance, and so, you know, he had to give people, you know, heads up. We weren't exactly sure what was going on with Greg, so we had to wait a little closer to his retirement date, and so, anyway, it was a bit of, in the middle where not sure what was going on or kind of waiting for something to go south, but I don't think that's happened. I guess the one question I wanted to ask Greg is, we haven't received a resignation letter or an intent to resign at some point.
Well, I'm not going to.
Before we hire someone for...
The reason why we pulled the trigger with Matt now is because he needed to be able, you basically needed a month's notice from me. So, in order to juggle things around, you know, the potential is out there. July twenty-sixth is the end, that'll be the last day that I'm working here, all right? If anything happens before then, then Matt, he has two weeks' notice, and he starts on June twenty-fourth, and so then he theoretically works two weeks with me to shadow and see what's going on. The potential is that I stay through July twenty-sixth, that's the longest it'll be, and then he's got five weeks with me, which can't hurt because there's too much to know, and two weeks including July fourth in one of those weeks, you know, isn't a lot of time anyway. So, you know, that's the long and short of it. It's either, call it either July, you know, twelfth or twenty-sixth. So, you know, I'll write soon. That's the best I can do. I mean, it's been a two-year process.
The salary's down at the department, if you don't leave. Okay, so I guess that's the long and short of it, basically. You know, so we wanted to hire Matt maybe a little earlier than expected, but not positive. And like Greg said, give him five weeks at the most to shadow him, and two weeks at the shortest amount, which we kind of talked about earlier and agreed that that would be, you know, sufficient or minimal. So, I would like to make the motion, oh, before we do that, we need a discussion on the compensation. During our conversations with Matt and the amount of money that he was making now, you know, as, you know, kind of a freelancer in a way, I think, he works for a number of different facilities.
He's a contract operator, which means he runs eight or ten facilities for a company, and so he's got staff underneath him, so he's not really freelance. He's working for a company, but they, you know, control, you know, eight or ten different facilities. That's what he's doing now.
So, in that, we discussed the salary and something that would be appealing to him. He does live in Fishkill, which is another great thing, so it's not that far obviously from here, so the other candidates who didn't have the licenses were distance away. So, there's a number of good things about Matt. His experience is great, he lives close by, so for emergencies or whatever, and, you know, and this seems like a good position for him, and he's happy with it. So, we're working off of what he's making now and what, you know, what Greg's salary is and how we have that broken down right now. Greg's salary is a salary plus a stipend for the position of superintendent. So, the number agreed on with Matt was ninety thousand dollars, which is substantially less than, which is somewhat less than Greg's. And the way Greg's was broken up, it was like fourteen thousand for the stipend, close to. I did send Matt a note and ask him, saying I wanted to break it up fifteen thousand, seventy-five thousand. I haven't heard back from him, but I don't know if there's any discussion on that, or I think we can hire him. We could, I guess, break that up later and just, you know, discuss hiring at the ninety thousand dollar salary.
And then figure out...
Figure out a breakdown.
Rate and then stipend.
Yeah.
It shouldn't matter.
Right. The overall number, but the...
It does matter.
The better off you do on the hourly, that affects your overtime, so...
Yes, the overtime.
If you get a stipend higher, it helps you out on your overtime.
Overtime, exactly.
No matter what you do, there's overtime. There's no way around it.
Yes.
Too small a staff, and too much stuff comes down to the top guy, so you have to figure all, I mean, I'm sure you have, but that all figured it.
So, the higher the stipend...
Right.
The lower our overtime costs.
And there's a breakdown of that, there's, that should be in your packet, I think.
I got it from Jeff today.
Oh, you got it from him? Did he give, if not, anyone wants to see if they... Anyway, so what we can discuss later, so I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Matt Krug as the new superintendent of water and wastewater at the yearly total of ninety thousand dollars.
Total compensation, right. Second...
Any further discussion?
With a start date of next week.
June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth.
And Matt's given his two weeks' notice, and he's ready to go, so. All in favor?
You know, they have to come through a meeting, so I'm afraid. Right, we only have two points.
There's a whole lot of surprises.
Oh, you can go back and write the message.
I didn't say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thanks for working with us.
Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay, so we'll bounce back up to discussion on recycling, which I believe ran, or who?
Yeah, Bugsy and I are going to work on this one.
Okay. Can't wait.
Can't wait. Be nice.
Where's the silver bullet?
There is no silver bullet. Bugsy and I have been talking for a while on the recycling and how the costs have gone up and up and up and up. So, I asked Michelle a couple of weeks ago if she could give us a breakdown of how much recycling we've been doing and how the prices have gone up. So, just a fast, Michelle gave us numbers from January of 2018 through to April of 2019. The cost per ton of recycling in that period has gone up from thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents a ton in January 2018 to eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents a ton last April. We're doing single-stream recycling here, which makes a big difference in, you know, why our costs are so high. So, Michelle got on the phone with, what is it, RE?
RE Community.
RE Community, who does, who picks, where we bring our recycling, she got on the phone and actually got someone who would speak to her and give her a lot of information. So, basically, what she found out is if we were to decide instead of doing single-stream to break up our recycling by doing co-mingles, glass plastics, et cetera, separate from mixed paper, which will be at this point cardboard and newspaper, the cost for the glass and plastics will be seventy dollars a ton as of May. Now, these are May prices. So, by the time we actually kick this off, all these prices are probably going to be higher, and the cost of mixed paper would be about twenty to twenty-five dollars a ton. So, Bugsy and I ran some numbers. If we were to say that we, assuming we, we're picking up right now an average of just under twenty tons a month of recyclables. If it was a quarter paper and three-quarters the co-mingles, we would be saving a little over six thousand dollars. If it was half and half, we'd be saving close to nine thousand dollars a year by breaking it up. We talked about how we would be able to do that. There's grant money out there, which Michelle has looked at for education materials, so we would have to do a lot of educating. Bugsy and I talked about how to do the pickups, and we talked about the fact that we could alternate weeks when we do co-mingles, the next week do paper and cardboard, the next week do co-mingles, and so on and so forth. And then that way, we could keep it, you know, keep everything totally separate. The RE, RE said that, you know, if we decided to break things up, all they need is a couple of days' notice to reset for us. My mind, and I don't know about Bugsy, I'm thinking that we're not going to be able to kick this off until probably early next year, by the time we got everything organized, got enough education out there. Couple of things. The recycles have to be clean, and they're not always clean, and Bugsy can talk about how they're not clean, but if we're going to do this and we're going to be able to get the stuff so that they'll accept it, it needs to be clean. Cans and bottles need to be clean. Paper and cardboard need to be totally separate. My thinking, and this is more personal, but I think it would have to be something like this, that we would have to be telling the residents that if we open a recycled bin, and it's a paper and cardboard day, and there's cans and bottles in there, we're not picking it up. We can't contaminate what's in the truck. Bugsy, can you talk about, more about the contamination part of it?
Water, keeping it dry, paper especially, adds a lot of weight to it. Everything should be cleaned out. Anything that has food touching it, actual food touching it. Paper product is not recyclable. Shredded paper is not recyclable. There's a long list, and we'll go over that with everyone when the time comes and start before that. It'll drop down a lot of the costs that we're coming across, it's just we got to see how it'll be with holding on to your paper for two weeks at a time, your co-mingles for two weeks at a time. There's a lot of things we definitely have to look through and go over.
Michelle has done a lot in terms of calling RE and getting information from us, and she actually found someone who was willing to talk. This time when she called, she volunteered if we have questions, anything like, I don't know, and I'm not sure if, you know, excess mail letters that we don't use, does that go with papers, newspapers and cardboard, or is that not recyclable? So, you know, what we're going to do, if we decide we want to do this, we need to sort of, set a date. We need to get all the questions together as soon as possible to ask them. We need to consider whether or not, and I thought there was grant money to get recycle bins. We would need to have people use recycle bins with covers to keep everything dry, whether or not there's grant money to do that. I thought there was, Michelle thought there wasn't, so we have to research that again. And then we have to sort of set a timeline, so the first thing is whether or not we want to do this. If we do, we need to come up with whatever questions we can come up with, and we'll feed them back to RE and see what they have to say. Michelle also suggests we look at a couple of other vendors, and you're going to look at a couple of localities that pick up their own garbage and see how...
Yes, I haven't had a chance to do it yet.
Okay, so, yeah.
But that's what I'm going to do.
To see what they do and how they do it.
I'm going to call some other places and see what they're charging for pickup, because I just think the amount this money has gone up in a little over a year is astronomical. They're the only ones around who collect it and take it, so they kind of got a little monopoly going. And when she says, Michelle found someone to talk to, the guy we normally talk to has a very poor attitude towards find someone else, but find another place to take it, and there is no other place. So, they kind of got us.
The last thing that Michelle, information that Michelle got is if we had decided to totally separate cardboard from newspaper and do that totally separate, then we could probably get that through for close to nothing. I think that's a step that we're not ready to get to anytime soon. If we can get the co-mingles versus paper and cardboard together, I think that would be a big step for the village. And then maybe a year down the line after that, we would consider doing something different. But that's what we came up with. And one other question that Bugsy and I were talking about, and I know that if I say this out loud, I'm going to be in deep trouble, but I'm going to say it anyway. Garbage cans on Main Street are going to be totally impossible to recycle because, not the Main Street businesses, but the Main Street vendors, because there's no way to keep that separate and clean. I mean, you can try to keep it separate, people are going to throw whatever in any place, so trying to keep that clean and be able to say that this is, this is all clean newspapers and this is all clean recycling, I don't see how that's going to happen now if somebody has a good idea of how we can do that. I mean, other than that, my suggestion on Main Street is to just pick it all up as regular garbage. And I know that's not going to get through. I don't see how, and if we bring it in with our recycles that are supposed to be not contaminated and contaminated truck, they'll eventually throw all our stuff in, you know, get mad at us and do whatever they do when they see contamination. So, that, the, the plain garbage cans on Main Street may be an issue, I'm not sure how we'll handle that, but that's something to come down the road. That's all I have.
Are there other municipalities that do this?
That pick up their own garbage and recycling? Very few.
Bugsy was going to call a couple of them, we'll get to second. I think I have a question for each.
There are municipalities that use, like Royal.
What's that?
There are municipalities that use a service like Royal instead of doing it themselves.
But those, they don't break that down to, that's all co-mingles, right? I mean, is there anyone that breaks it down to, you know, to plastics and glasses, or...
Well, it used...
Not that I'm aware of, but I will look into it.
It used to be that way around here.
We used to break it up. We used to have paper, cardboard in one, and co-mingles in another.
Right. Do, just in your observation about going around and collecting it, do any people just separate it anyway?
There are still a few people who separate their co-mingles.
It's just a habit, you know?
Is the, when you're picking up the recycles, is a lot of it contaminated? Can you tell from it? I mean, my thinking is the cans and the bottles need to be rinsed out, and if I don't rinse, my husband will shoot me, so I rinse everything, but, I mean, is there a lot that's not rinsed that are thrown in there?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of heavy contamination.
That's an educational learning curve that we're going to have to stop pushing, and...
How do you keep paper and cardboard dry? I can understand how you can keep paper dry, you have a closed container, but a container for cardboard with the size of the boxes? But a container for cardboard with the size of the boxes that, that get delivered? When I get a shipment from Amazon with a new printer in it? And that, that doesn't fit in, in anything.
They're called box cutters.
Okay, and I do, I do cut them down, but they are still larger than most containers.
Yes, it's, it would be an inconvenience.
It's not just an inconvenience, how do I find something that big? The difference.
Well, the recycled ones, bins that Lake Royal uses are the same size as the garbage bins. I fit everything in them.
Oh, that's a garbage pail.
The gar, the green ones, they have, they also have, like I have it.
Yeah.
My rental is the same exact size.
Yes, yes. But that's the size, it's like a size of a garbage pail.
Bugsy, do you know?
Yes, I guess.
Yeah. Will they not pick it up if the cardboard is wet or it's just because it's gonna cost us more money?
Will who not pick it up? Us?
No, not us. Let me rephrase that.
Will they not accept it up in RE community?
Is it considered contaminated if it's wet?
Oh, they love it when it's wet.
Oh, I'm sure.
That's more money for them.
Because they charge by weight.
They go by weight.
And as we're looking at it now, I mean, the numbers we're looking at now are, you know, you have to assume that most of this is just the way it's coming out. So if it's wet, it's wet. I mean, our stuff goes out, I don't cover it. So yes, it rains and my newspaper, my, you know, cardboard gets wet. So it would be working on the same premise that we're working on now. It would be nicer if it isn't wet. But it's not, it's not a necessity in terms of us not being able to.
No, it is not a necessity, but it is ideal for saving money.
What is the, what is the charge per ton of wet paper or wet cardboard? Because the savings here assume the lower rate for paper.
The charge per ton for newspaper and cardboard, as Michelle had said, between twenty and twenty-five dollars a ton. Now, it doesn't matter whether it's wet or dry. If it's wet, it's just gonna be more tarage.
So we're not going to get as much savings?
Right. I mean, we're, we're just gonna be paying more weight, but that's, that's what we're looking at now. Because what we're putting up now gets wet.
So this was calculated with, with no cover?
Yeah, this was calculated, these numbers Michelle gave me are what we've actually brought down there for the past year.
But they, this is an assumption, not a, not.
But, no, but the top half of that sheet is all actual numbers.
Yeah, the top, I understand the top half of the sheet, it's, it's pure weight of everything that goes in. It's the bottom half of the sheet, the bottom portion where there's an assumption as to what amount.
I just used the nineteen point ninety-four and used that as the, as the monthly rate and divided it. So I, I, you know, it was just estimates.
Right now.
Are there any estimates as to if, if the, if the way it's, if the way it's handled is plastic and tin one week and paper and cardboard the next week? How many people take the, the plastic and tins and throw it in the garbage? As opposed to holding onto it for two weeks?
Meaning as when we have what we call a double week of recycling? There are a good handful of people that will sit there and go, I'm not holding this in my house for two weeks and it ends up in the garbage.
But there's also a number, if we went digging through all the garbage, where people don't recycle at all.
That's correct.
That's true.
I mean, how do you, I don't know how you think about that.
Newark has a recycling enforcement officer.
I mean, there, yeah, there are places where someone can go around and check the bins. We just don't have that kind of. But I think there's enough people who think green and think about the environment in this village that maybe will buy into this. I mean, it's not going to be any different than what it is now, other than the fact that we're separating.
How does this work with you making trips to, to the recycle plant, you know, versus, or you're gonna have to make one more trip? I would imagine.
If we're doing it alternate weeks, it should be like normal recycling. One garbage truck, driver, two riders, three-quarters of the day. That's how it should go if we're doing it alternate weeks.
If you, if you do the separation in both picked up on one day, then it's a problem.
Yeah, I can't drive two trucks at once. I can't drive two trucks at once.
No, I know. So the only alternative that we have is to alternate weeks?
We can, that is our best choice. We used to do it, run two trucks on a Friday. Eddie would drive one truck, I would drive another. George Wilson was another driver we had, Kenny Trimble. We had multiple drivers and we could run multiple trucks. And we used to bring it down here to dumpsters and fill the dumpsters and then Royal would come and take it.
But you get too mu, do you get too much now to do that in terms of the volume? Would it fill the dumpsters?
We get more recycling now than what we did back when we were running the two-truck system.
Although if I look at the numbers, the amount that is recycled, just in looking at last month's numbers, we are not doing, not you, the village residents are not doing a good job of recycling. The recycling percentage is woefully small. It should be significantly higher than, than what was shown in the month of May.
It'll go both ways. With the contamination that's in there that people think is recycling, but it's actually garbage, your numbers will increase with garbage there, but you'll also be pulling stuff out of garbage that is actually recyclable. So it, it looks like it could possibly balance out. I don't have the numbers for that.
If, if I look at the prices we're paying now, we're paying is the same for recycles and garbage.
Yes.
So, so pulling it out of one and putting it in the other, it doesn't make any difference. Bottom line, the economic bottom line.
Correct.
It's the same cost. If we were to provide clean recycles and people adhere to what is recyclable, like the Styrofoam, Styrofoam is not recyclable, but you see it and everybody is recycling.
Some of it is.
I thought we, I thought recon only took one and five.
There are certain, there are certain types of Styrofoam that is actually becoming recyclable now.
And that recon will take?
They take everything we bring up there anyway. So yeah, I would assume so.
Okay.
There's a lot of educate, we need to get a lot of education.
I just finished rewriting the recycling chapter and.
Sorry, Marie.
And, no, no, the recycling chapter said we only took one, two and three. So that's been changed to one, two, three, four and five. But I thought that Styrofoam was not a recyclable material.
Most of it isn't, no.
So we need to find out what is?
Yes, education is our first line of defense on this. For myself.
We can do now.
For you and board and for the residents as well.
There, there is grant money for education material that Michelle and I will look into once we decide we're gonna do this and how we're gonna do it.
Well, I mean, that's something we could and should do now. If Styrofoam is reci, is accepted as recyclable by recon, let's, let's make that known now. I, I, I agree with you that whatever is decided here, better, more education is necessary. But if there's something that we can do now.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Okay, can I, can I have you settle a disagreement in our household?
Don't, don't. Get us on the net.
House of Commerce here in front of you or your personal house?
I need, I need a definitive answer. Is a pizza box recyclable?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Not if it's dirty, no.
The top is.
Unless, unless, if it has no cheese stuff.
If it hasn't, if it hasn't been contaminated, the top is.
But if there's a greasy spot on it, on the bottom, it's not contaminated.
Pretty much means that it is not recyclable.
Thank you.
If it's real olive oil. Fran? So I think it's worth looking into. Yes, Erin?
If you want any citizen help on end of side, be happy to.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin.
Okay. CCA update. Think the only thing, we did talk to Jewel about their outreach and/or lack of, and I think there's a lot of confusion on this. I wish that our, our point person was here tonight. Anyway, and talking to them, and they had sent emails saying they were setting up these outreaches, but none of them were in the area. They were like either Fishkill or Poughkeepsie or wherever. And I said, that's nice, but we need one in the village. So they did set one up and I, do you know the date on that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Let me just, let me just pull it up. I put it up on the village's website. I believe it's Monday.
It's Monday or Tuesday.
Let me just pull it.
Anyway, Jewel is the one, is the agency, I guess, or whatever company that we were working with that did all the research and put everything together for this and for a number of the communities in the area. They were supposed to have an exhaustive outreach, which they really didn't. They had stuff that spent in the papers. We've been doing this since 2016. I think that's winter, we started discussing this and starting working with them. So it's not like it hasn't been out there, but they're, as usual, you know, people didn't quite hone in on anything until the date of. So letters have gone out and you can opt out. The way it works is everyone's opted in. The idea is that we're getting different, all the communities trying to, you know, pool our resources or pool our numbers so that we could lower, lower the cost or at least be able to negotiate better. And also we could ask for cleaner energy or know where the energy was coming from. Right now, Central Hudson is not our supplier. They, they are, you know, they, they are the conduit for it. And so they, you know, what you see on your water bill, I mean, on your electric bills is from their suppliers, but basically Central Hudson are the people that, you know.
Deliver.
That deliver and they're the ones that maintain your lines, they're the ones that take care of your service. So on this, because of that, I asked them if they'd please bring a, you know, have a meeting in Cole Spring. So on the seventeenth, there'll be one at the Firehouse at seven-thirty. Firehouse, Cole Spring Firehouse on Main Street. Hopefully, people with questions will show up and Jewel will be there and you can get the answers straight from the horse's mouth, I guess, and, and understand better hopefully how the, how the whole process works. Basically, I think there were two, we, we, they're allowed to, you can opt out, you can, you're opted in. If you want to, you can also opt for the lowest rate, which, you know, if you're not concerned about where your, the power comes from or the supplier. I think that's the lowest is like point six or oh-six.
When oh-six, oh-six, I think something like that.
So it's a bit lower, you can do that or you can just stay with it. Or you can opt out and you can get your electric wherever Central Hudson gets it. There'll be no difference on your bills. Everything will look exactly the same. It'll show where you're getting your, where the energy is being supplied from and the cost of it. That'll be the only, the only difference or you'll be able to see that. Right now, probably most people think Central Hudson has a power station somewhere or whatever and that's where, you know, your supply comes from, but that's not the case. Anyway. I wish we had pushed them a bit more and, but we didn't for information to get out. And as everyone probably knows, if you're sitting in these positions, you can try as hard as you want and a lot of times that won't work either. But anyway, seventeen, here, know people that are concerned and wanna know more about it. Please come to the meeting at the Firehouse. Let's see. Judy, are you, would you like to contribute tonight or?
Sure. Sorry for being late. Had to pick up my daughter in Westchester. But I just wanted to report that at the town board meeting last week, we did an ARCON training and St. Christopher's Inn provided the training and gave us all kits. And it was very worthwhile and there were other town staff that were trained. And if anyone would like to train, St. Christopher's Inn has opened this up to the public one Sunday a month. So you can get in touch with me and I can provide the village with the information and the details. If any members of the village board would like to, or any members of the public would like to train, the ARCON training, I found it very informative and, you know, relatively easy and it could save a life. We also passed a resolution at the town board meeting opposing the new, the new proposal for the Dan Scammer Power Plant in Newburgh. It would be a diesel and natural gas plant with fossil fuels and the board opposed it because we are a climate-smart community and oppose anything that could compromise the air quality in the Hudson Valley. And I have a sign-on letter. If you're interested, I could also provide that. Whereas the village could also sign on to the letter if you would like to oppose it. And that deadline is June twentieth, so I can circulate it. I just got a copy of it via email. I'm happy to circulate that.
Fiona, can you send that to Steve?
Yes.
We have, we have, we have a proposition in our agenda tonight.
And finally, there's an important public hearing next week on June twentieth at seven-thirty at the old VFW about the Hudson Highland Reserve. You may have heard about this development off of Horton Road. I know it's not in the village, but it will impact the area. And there's a draft environmental impact statement on the town board website. And the hearing again is next Thursday, June twentieth at seven-thirty with the planning board at the old VFW. And that, that's a proposal for twenty-five lots near Horton Road, Route nine and an equestrian center.
We did have a question.
Yes.
Same question as last month. And that's relative to hiring of another building inspector?
Yes, we have been advertising, we advertised for a couple of weeks in the local papers and we've received only one resume so far. So we're looking for more resumes. We also put it out, Greg, the current code enforcement officer, has put it out on sites that he's familiar with that might have more, he might generate more interest that way. Because it doesn't seem like advertising locally, we're getting the number of candidates we would like to see.
Are there any people on the county list?
There were not the last time we checked, no. We have asked the county also to provide some, you know, work on these some names.
That would be for a part-time, right?
Part-time.
Yeah. They may not even have a list for that. They have a list for inspectors.
Maybe we should expand it and advertise in Westchester.
We just, we just expanded, um, and add, and put it to fill the town, Poughkeepsie Journal.
Poughkeepsie Journal.
Jeff has a contact there to put it on.
Oh, okay.
If you want to.
That sounds good.
It wasn't, it wasn't that expensive for like thirty days.
Okay. And if anyone knows, if anyone they would like to recommend. They have to be New York State certified, of course.
Has the town come to any decision on who's going to renovate the building? Have we gotten that far yet or are we still?
We were, the bids are out and that's, the renovation, you know, we're hoping to begin that.
Yeah, when's the deadline for the bids, you know?
I don't have it memorized, but I can get you that information. But that's, we hope to move forward soon with the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, correspondence, this is a follow-up. I did call, there was concern about pedestrian safety near the Chestnut Ridge Apartments. Several of the residents there stopped in and voiced their concern. Asked me to write a letter to the DOT representative, regional representative. I called, I called the representative and also sent a letter. Their response is this, which we just received. "Thank you for your correspondence, New York State Department of Transportation, dated May twentieth. Your correspondence has been assigned to the Regional Traffic and Safety Group for review and given the tracking number T nineteen one forty-four. We get numerous requests to review traffic conditions at various locations. As such, it may take a while before we review this matter. Please be assured that the New York State Department of Transportation will investigate the concerns you have raised. Thank you for your interest in traffic safety, for bringing your concerns to our attention. If you require further information on this request, please contact the Regional Traffic and Safety Group." And this is phone number, signed, Michael P. Manning, Traffic Safety and Operations Investigator. Let's see, what else do we have here? There's a request to waive thirty-day advance notice of liquor license. This one's a little bit puzzling to me because, you know.
Yeah, I'll get this one as well. This is it.
I discussed this with Jeff, but it's for a business that's not even opened and it's being, a building that's being renovated, so I don't know.
It's, it's not clear whether or not this is a request to provide. It's, it's not clear whether or not this is a request to provide our agreement to reduce the thirty-day waiting period or whether or not this is a notice to let us know that at some point the location of fifteen Main Street will op- operate a bar and tavern. For whatever reason, I think it's the second.
I think, um, yeah, I think Jeff may have worded it wrong on the, because he's saying it's a request to waive and that's not what I'm reading.
Right, I'm not reading.
I'm just reading that it's the notice.
Correct.
For providing a thirty, they're giving us the thirty-day notice.
Notice if they intend to open.
And that I'm okay with. This is just a formality, but they're not asking it, us to waive it.
Except that, the, if you look at the notice, number fifteen, they are going to have a licensed outdoor area. Had, an outdoor area which is licensed to serve wine, beer and cider. And that's a patio and deck, or deck. And I don't see any patio or deck.
Didn't we just mix that?
Yeah. So that's, that's one, um, one question that I had. It seemed I had another one. Oh, number eighteen, is the premises located within five hundred feet of three or more on-premises liquor establishments? And the answer to that is yes. So Hudson House, this is, this is within five hundred feet. Is the depot within five hundred feet?
By the, the way the crow flies.
Huh?
The way the crow flies, but I don't know if you walk.
By the crow flies, right. And, and the name of the prim- the, um, establishment is The Crow Nest.
And, and the lawyer's letter, he's saying, uh, my client is attempting to submit the application sooner than the thirty-day period. It may do so with a letter from the community board stating that no objections exist if in fact they do not. If in fact they do not to this application. I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be giving them a waiver of a thirty-day notice because I don't know whether they're going to set a business, but I don't think it's within thirty days.
I, I don't think it's going to be thirty days either, but, so, I'm fine with saying we have no objection to the thirty-day advance notice, but see no reason for accelerating it to anything less than thirty days. And by the way, where's the patio or deck that you're going to be serving alcohol on?
Yeah, that's.
You want me to, uh, work this out on?
Yeah, we should, we should call the attorney and ask him what they actually want here, I think.
Okay, okay. We'll do that.
Okay, so we'll table this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, we do have a resolution and Steve wanted to have his here, an old business resolution opposing the Dan Skammer build-out, uh, proposal. I'd like to table that. I'd like Steve to be here since he requested it to be on. Anyone object to that?
No.
Nope. Um, um, we have some guests here who did want to speak about this.
Oh, okay. Well, we could do that at public, uh, public comment, I think. We'll just be a couple more minutes. I know you've been patient. So, anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Um, next is approved four hundred ten dollars, fourteen cent credit for sewer usage, uh, charges twelve Benedict Road. I think, uh, we discussed that with the, uh, with the owner, uh, at our last meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, credit of four hundred ten dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Nice work for you.
Really.
Next, uh, request to purchase, uh, village-owned property at fifteen Main Street, um, review, uh, plan. Um, it's, uh, I think it's everything that we asked for. Small, small piece of property.
Yep.
Stairs running up. So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the sale of the, uh, property shown in the map, site map, uh, fifteen Main Street, uh, to accommodate, uh, stairs going to the, uh, the door which fronts on, uh, on Main Street.
Yep.
Can, can I comment on that? I'm sorry, I know this is unusual, but they, they came to the zoning board meeting with the plan and that's where the deck and patio is going to go for the outside drinking area. They moved, the plan that we saw, they moved the ramp to the side of the building so that they could use the patio for the, with what they're buying.
We, we told them last week that they couldn't buy that, all that property. All they can buy is enough to get the stairs to the front door.
Okay.
So they're not going to own all of that what they think was originally going to be, but still it'd be our property.
So when were they, when was they, was, sorry, when was she in front of you with that? Because we discussed this at our last meeting. Was it the last meeting?
It's the last meeting.
Yeah, it might have been before that.
Because they originally came with us and wanted to purchase, they want, they had moved the ramp so that there was entrance to the door, but they also wanted a deck going across the whole front of the property. And we said we wouldn't sell the property. We'd only sell the piece so that they had, have an entry to the, uh, like stairs, just to the door and not the deck.
So it sounds like their lawyer's letter is behind the times then.
Okay.
Need a copy.
All right, so, uh.
Fifty-nine square feet is that?
Fifty, fifty-nine square feet, that's right.
That piece is.
Can you amend your motion to say fifty-nine square feet?
I will do that. I will, uh, amend my motion and make a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, sale of the, uh, village property um, owned at fifteen Main Street in the square footage of, of fifty-nine square feet.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of bills?
Okay, we have two batches, one from, uh, May, which is our previous post over here. I move to approve batch number five one four four for a total of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
I will second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now I move to approve batch number fifty-one forty-three. This is for June, uh, two thousand nineteen for a total of fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
I will second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, um, approval of minutes. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, trustee workshop meeting five, dated five twenty-eight nineteen.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. On page, what was the section? Page four. On page four, down by the bottom, the last bullet point. It says, "Board members express concern that a future property owner may allow the sale of alcohol." I don't believe that's what it should, I would say that we express concern that a future property owner may allow consumption of alcohol, not necessarily sale, because there is going to be sale of alcohol on that property, uh, you know, from day one.
Beer and wine.
Hmm?
Beer and wine.
So, uh.
Beer, wine and cider.
No, is, is to allow the sale of alcohol, correct wording, or I, I thought we were concerned that they would allow the consumption of alcohol on outside the door.
That was my recollection.
Yeah, if not to, for the sale of alcohol, that's the, the purpose of the building or the intent of the building owner. So that we should change that to, or just strike it.
Uh, yeah, that line just concerned me.
Um, so how do you want to handle that one? Do you want to reword or do you want to just table that and?
Um.
I think we were concerned about outside consumption of, off the sidewalks or?
Yeah, when we talked about buying the property.
How you want to put that in word?
Board members express concern that a future property owner may allow, you know.
Outside consumption of alcoholic beverages?
And that's, uh.
Near sidewalk?
On sidewalk.
Or near and on sidewalk?
No, that's against the law. It's consumption of alcoholic beverages in an open container is against village law.
Right.
Village code, so we.
We're not concerned that they would allow the sale of alcohol. Do we want to just strike that last bullet?
Since I don't have better phrasing for it.
I'm not, uh, unless you want to table it and we'll listen to the tape, you know, watch the video.
Why don't we do that? Okay, so we will table the first minute, five twenty-eight nineteen. We'll table that till we clarify. Um, second is, uh, workshop meeting six four nineteen. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we get to public comment. Sorry, if I let people keep piping up, then they can get a little crazy, so, nothing personal.
Uh, I am in favor of the resolution opposing the Dan Skammer Power Plant because it will burn frat gas, which will put CO2 and methane into the air, which will contribute to climate change, which can increase sea levels, increase temperatures, kill animals, et cetera. Um, and additionally, if we use clean and renewable things such as wind and sewer, we could create more jobs than with the Dan Skammer Power Plant.
Could you just, uh, state your name so we have that for the record?
Uh, I'm Dana Spiegel.
What was the first name again? I'm sorry.
Dana, D.A.N.A.
Dana, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your comments.
I appreciate you coming.
Would you be willing, because we did, we tabled the resolution until next week, would you be willing to write a sentence or two that we could add to the resolution for when we discuss it next week? I thought your explanation on why you are opposed to it was very good and I think it adds a lot of substance and fact to the resolution that we have in front of us. Would you be willing to do that?
Uh, I feel so, probably.
If, if you could send that to any of us and all of our emails are on the resolution on the page.
Yep.
We can add it as another whereas.
Yep.
And you could be a part of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
We'd love to do that.
Thank you for waiting.
When is, when should I know?
Do you think you could have that to us by the end of this week? Would that be okay?
Probably.
We don't have a meeting next week, so it'd be two weeks.
Oh, we don't have a meeting next week?
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Then I definitely care.
Thank you.
Projects due on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have, uh, anything else in the public? Yes, John?
I, um, wasn't sure if, uh, with regards to our, um, traffic festival on June twenty-ninth. Um, I was down at the field, it was for geese system. For, I'm not sure what's going on the field, but there wasn't too many geese droppings down there. But if that changes, uh, in the next week or so, I was wondering whether or not I could put in, uh, a little geese deterrent system to, uh, with, would be warning, uh, yellow warning tape and some sticks. Uh, but I'm not sure how your, your dog system is working, uh.
I, I think it's, uh, I, I'm fine with it. I'm not sure how the dog system would be the greatest of people that got. As long as you work it out with Bruce Campbell, who mows the lawns and, because he's the one that's going to have the finished cut for you, so, yeah, yeah, as long as you work it out with Bruce so that it's not, you know.
Yeah, and if there's any other events going on, I'll check with Jeff, if we can isolate baseball or anything like that. I think they'll be too late to put enough some stuff. Just, it looks pretty good down there, but there is some droppings around, so. Okay, uh, the other question, uh, I had a couple of questions, um, with regards to, um, parking at the highway department in the back. Is that, uh, okay? Is, if you, uh, had that discussion?
Three hundred and fifty dollars?
Okay. I thought you said, I thought three hundred was the last number, what?
I thought it was four.
Oh. I guess I should shut my mouth, huh?
And you're, and you're going to have an attendant?
Yes, yeah, we're going to have one on Fair Street and then one in the back so that you can guide them to park.
It was three, three fifty, so review the minutes.
Okay.
In fact, I think it's in the minutes that we just changed.
I think the one deterrent will, and we have to get, we have to get cones because we have to have a cutoff where no one can go in the rear. There has to be flow through, you know, open access the entire time for police and highway.
Yeah, I could talk to Betsy then.
So we need to, we need to, uh, calm off, but we, whatever, if we can, but we have hundreds of cones now. If we cone up like before the building coming across and just leave a little, an opening for you guys to get through. How much parking are you looking for?
We're trying to get as much. Six growers are coming, uh, to town, so that's maybe forty-six cars. I have looked up there and maybe can, I can stop by and see you and stuff.
We're, we're thinking of filling, going on both sides if we can, so people pull in and leave the open.
So you got the sand area. I just needed people to be, you know, I got food trucks, guys come in. Maybe taking spots up in the front of the field, but I needed actually, you know, another five fifty, sixty spots. I, I was in the back and, uh, I'm thinking like where the car is.
Just for a one-day period?
Yeah, just Saturday. Yeah, Saturday in the morning, uh, you know, Saturday eight o'clock in the morning and, and then by, uh, at the evening.
That wouldn't affect me as, nearly as much as the police.
Right.
My two concerns are, one is my, getting my vehicles in and out, uh, and two, if there happens to be, God forbid, a fire down there, will we be able to get a fire truck down there? Pro- you know.
Will we come in the highway, get in there? In the back in the highway problem? And that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know. It's tight back there. He's got two, two, he's got two sanitation trucks. The Philistown has their, their salt trucks back there, not, not all of them, but there's equipment back there.
Yeah, they got some stuff there, I know.
Our, our vehicles, the fire department's got vehicles down there. It's just, God forbid, the worst case scenario, something happens and you need to get emergency apparatus back there. If, if there's cars everywhere, it's going to be a problem.
Right. Okay, well, I'll, I'll look. There's a lot of area that they're parking and stuff, so maybe I'll stop and see you tomorrow or something like that.
We need, we need to have a clear, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Straight from the front.
It's all masked, yeah.
It's to the side and fires in that, in the salt shed, a truck and full rate up there.
Yeah, there was no plan on parking on the driveway in.
There's just quite a few.
Or once you get up. And then where you like, you park your cars.
Yep.
And then over maybe by the salt building, you know, maybe by the public county, you know, so there's five spots here and there's ten spots over there. And keep it in the open and stuff.
All right, as long as nobody's past the building line, that's where the police vehicles are and I have equipment back there. I don't want nobody.
Yeah, right. That's where it stops, like, at the building line, you know, like, right there. So, um, another question too I had is, um.
Betsy, do you, on Saturday, are you there at home in the morning?
I'm hoping not.
I would just make sure wherever you want stuff, you get, you put it out. We can do that Friday.
Yeah, all three of us can get together. I can move vehicles around and move some stuff around and clear up some better room and everything like that.
Yeah.
So everything works for him, Larry and myself.
He's going to have two attendants. We'll all hold him too. Um, so if one's towards the back, uh, they just have to know that no one's going back into the rear of the building or.
Yeah, and we'll have somebody up there, so I'll have that person to know what the layout is, if there's a little map layout or something.
Okay.
And then the other question was, if you got Fair Street in the, I've talked to Larry about it, but whether or not being able to make Fair Street one-way.
That, we, we used to do Fair Street one-way, starting at four-thirty for the church.
Right, up to north.
It would be up to the village board, um, if like, if we can, if they want to close that off, says a one-way, starting at eleven o'clock. And do that till, you'd have to do that till at least seven, till an hour past the event. I'll do an hour before and an hour past.
Where are we talking? Where, where?
I'm, I'm talking from northern, yeah, yeah.
All the way up to nine D.
Just eliminate the two different directions of traffic, uh, somebody getting, uh, you know, it gets busy.
I wouldn't be able to do it, and I would not suggest doing it, from nine D all the way up to Fair Street. I would only be able probably to do it, uh, for like, where, where, for the church, just Fair Street up to northern. Anything past that, then the restaurant's going to be affected, the, you know, the, uh, community right there, the, uh, what's that? Springbrook's going to be affected.
Yeah.
And people coming off nine D are going to be confused that now all of a sudden they can't go down that way. It's going to cause a wholness. And I don't have, and I wouldn't have manpower to cover that.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and then, uh, so we'll just explain that idea. And then, um, and then I just wanted to also see if, uh, by chance, we could put a couple, uh, two-foot by eight-foot banners on the fence. About a week before, um, roughly around June twenty-first, the Friday. about a week before, roughly around June twenty-first, the Friday.
As long as they have slots in them so that it's not a wind barrier.
Yeah, I was thinking actually put in.
And I think they, you know, for instance, the tennis court, I think they had put up, you know, something to do that, you know, for shaving that area or whatever in there, and it was solid and it, I think it affects the fences. Or if there's winds, it'll pull that fence right down, so. If you're gonna use something, it needs to be porous.
Yeah, oh, even, so even if like, how about like a two-by-eight piece of plywood, that would not be?
Still works as a same.
Same thing, is the same thing.
Yeah, I think that would be not good.
You can just put wind cuts in it.
Yeah.
I think banners would be cheaper and easier and lighter, and if you have slots.
Yeah, and they have the grommets on the end and they usually reinforce, but like you said, with the wind, a couple slots in there. Okay, that's all I had.
Well, if you put those up or whatever, you'd be responsible for any damage that comes. If a wind comes and the deck gets ripped down, you'd be responsible for that.
All right.
So, understand that.
When did you say you were gonna put them up?
I was thinking the June twenty-first, which is a Friday, like the weekend before.
On Mayor's Park, that's?
On Mayor's Park, that's, yeah. They're gonna focus on the hypers, um, walking up there.
Because they have another event on the twenty-second in Dockside, I don't wanna, you know.
What's going on in Dockside?
The Ascend.
No, that's not in Dockside, yeah, that's not.
Is it Mayor's Park?
Is that Mayor's Park?
Yeah, it's on, okay.
Anyone else have a problem with any of that? All right?
Thank you so much. Thanks, yes. My name's Alan Speedall, I'd also like to speak out in favor of the Dan Skammer resolution and bring up a couple more points. One, it'd be the health impacts of the plant, if it's releasing nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds, formaldehyde, particulate matter, methane. These are known to cause respiratory, cardiovascular diseases, neurological development diseases, and cancer. The, the company might make a point that the plant, the new plant runs cleaner than the old plant, but the current, um, proposal does not include taking down the old plant and the new plant would be running much more than the old plant. The current plant only runs about five percent of the time. The plant is running the new plant nineteen times that much, which takes out any benefits of it being cleaner from running natural gas. It still comes out emitting forty-one, you know, tons, I believe it is, of pollutants that would have an impact on the health of our community. It also will have an impact on all the electric utility users, no matter where you get your electricity from, if you join, if you stay part of the, um, the CCA and you're getting nice clean energies, you still have from the Central Hudson part, a capacity fee tapped on that, the whole reason they want to deal with this is to now part of the capacity zone in New York City and they get a fee whether this runs or not for the life of the plant, forty years, even if it becomes uneconomical to operate because the cost of gas rises as we finally start pricing carbon. They still get paid millions and millions of dollars, comes out of every rate payer's bill, no matter where you're getting your electricity. I've got solar panels in my house, I don't draw any electricity, I still pay this just for them being able to say, well, if we need it, we'll be able to turn this on and for peak capacity. And the fact is, we do not need it. The Jacobson study and the Synapse study show that we do not need this capacity. And the better models, if they, instead of building a power plant, they could build battery storage plant like they done in Carrigan, Lansing, and Ulster, and Hoya, in Colorado. And that would then not only be clean, it would enable more renewable energy, be an economical win for the community and still be to be the peak power supply that, that. Two more things to think of.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I just, I just wanted to share this email that I got from Zero to Go.
From where?
From Atticus at Zero to Go about the possibility of having, them having a station.
Sure.
July fourth, so there's a copy for you to be there.
So I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second. Favor?
Uh, aye.